Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukeniak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a veteran with us? No vet? Could you please start us off, sir?
To the Pledge of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes, I trust you all had a chance to look at the minutes from 6:20. Any questions, comments? If not, motion?
We'll move to approve minutes of meeting of June 20th, 2017.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Upstanding, I was not at that meeting.
And Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay. First item, recognition. We have a resolution recognizing one of our longtime employees. I will turn it over to Catherine for the reading of that resolution.
Resolution number 11821-071817, resolution of appreciation to Peggy DeLappa. Whereas Peggy DeLappa began her employment with the city of Oak Creek on June 16th, 1998, is a full-time clerk-matron with the Oak Creek Police Department. And whereas on January 1st, 2009, Peggy DeLappa transferred to the clerk's office at City Hall as clerk's secretary, and on September 1st, 2016, transferred to the newly designed administrative support team as administrative support assistant. Whereas upon transferring to City Hall, Peggy was integral in the many elections held in the city involving our citizens' most important right, the right to vote. And whereas throughout her rights of service, her years of service, both at the Oak Creek Police Department and City Hall, Peggy has carried out her duties as clerk-matron, clerk's secretary, and administrative support assistant in a professional and courteous manner, and has always worked with city department heads, employees, boards and commission members, and the public in a warm, friendly, and helpful manner. And whereas Peggy is well-known for her work ethic and dedication to the city, and has been an outstanding representative of the city of Oak Creek. And whereas after 19 years and one month of dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek, Peggy DeLappa is retiring effective July 10th, 2017. And whereas Peggy will be truly missed by all whom she had contact with over the last 19 years, and the city of Oak Creek has benefited tremendously from Peggy DeLappa's tireless dedication and many contributions. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek, that sincere appreciation and gratitude be extended to Peggy for her many years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Peggy and her family on her retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Peggy DeLappa, passed and adopted this 18th day of July, 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. I personally would like to wish Peggy a warm, happy, and long retirement. Peggy was one of the most supportive people here. When I first got here, you're kind of learning the ropes. Peggy was always the first one to tell you what was going on, to help you out. She always asked what you needed before you really needed it. So, best of luck to Peggy in her retirement. So, anyone else? Nothing?
Okay.
Motion, please.
We'll move to approve resolution 11821-071817, resolution of appreciation to Peggy DeLappa, retiring administrative support assistant.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Brings us to item five, our first public hearing of the night. Just a little housekeeping on a public hearing. You will be limited to three minutes in speaking. So, it is to consider a rezon by Venture Space to rezone the properties at 1901, 1941 East Rossin Avenue, B4 Highway Business, A1 Limited Agricultural, LM1 Light Manufacturing. Doug, or you, I'm sorry, read it into the record.
That's okay. Public hearing number one is to consider a request by Michael Friedy, Venture Space LLC, to rezone the properties at 1901 and 1941 East Rossin Avenue, from B4 Highway Business and A1 Limited Agricultural to LM1 Light Manufacturing. Applicant is Michael Friedy, Venture Space LLC. Property owner is Russell J. Beaumont. Therefore, the legal description and the date of notice was June 8th, 2017.
Doug?
Thanks, Catherine. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing under request by Venture Space LLC, who has applied for a rezoning of the properties at 1901 and 1941 East Rossin Avenue, from B4 Highway Business and A1 Limited Agricultural to LM1 Light Manufacturing. Two potential developments were included in the submitted narrative as part of this application. A self-service storage facility on one lot, as well as a commercial condominium facility on the other lot. As well, a certified survey map has been submitted and is up for review later on this agenda, which would subdivide the property for those two different developments. Both of those future developments that were cited in the development concept narrative, including the self-storage and the commercial condominium facilities, would still require conditional use permit approval prior to site and building plans approval. So, this, to be very clear, just to rezone it to that base LM1 Light Manufacturing zoning, there would still need to come back each one of them for approval by the Plan Commission and Common Council for a conditional use permit for those respective developments. Now typically, as part of a rezoning petition, conditional use petition, we would have some additional information regarding the potential end development. And that's not always the case, and it's not required, just to be clear. It just gives the staff, gives the neighborhood, gives the council, a little bit better understanding of what the, kind of the end game might be. In this case, the site is being rezoned first, again, in an effort to get the entitlement so it's ready for sale and for the land division. And at that point in time, each individual property owner would come in with their detailed plans for the Plan Commission and Common Council. During the Plan Commission's review of the rezoning request, several residents did express concerns ranging from the process to aesthetic concerns, to the proximity to residential properties, as well as safety, and the lack of details for those prospective developments. You do have a copy of those meeting minutes as part of your council report. Now, the way this will work is that the mayor will call three times for a public hearing. When he does that, if you have filled out an appearance form and submitted that to the city clerk, she will read your name. Please proceed to come to the podium. Just repeat your name and address, and we can proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, I will make three calls. We have people that wish to speak, and we have people that wish to have their comments read into record. For respect of that, I'm going to read these into the record first after I make the first call. First call. First comment, does not wish to speak, would like to comment made part of the record. Marlene Klug, 7252 South Delaney Drive. I am against the new zoning on Rossin. Second is Joy Taylor, 7293 South King Arthur's Court. Says, "I do not wish to speak, but I want it read publicly. I am against the rezoning." Third, Deanna, I'm sorry, I'm going to kill your name, Chakowski, 7347 South Delaney Drive. Again, does not wish to speak, but would like the comments made part of the record. Again, zoning change, do not follow the procedure required. Next, Amy Alonso, Milligross, looks like 7305 South Delaney Drive. Does not wish to speak, would like the comments made part of the record. I'm opposed to allowing the proposed business operation near Camelot Trails to proceed. Next is Mary Zelenko, 2200 East Excalibur Court. She does not wish to speak, but would like her comments made part of the record. I'm against the rezoning of the property next to Camelot Trails because it will decrease my property value. Next is Sharon Roche, 7247 Delaney Drive. Does not wish to speak, but would like her comments to be made part of the record. Twenty years we've enjoyed the peace and quiet views of the field. Please do not approve the storage units. I fear it is a safety concern, and the value of our condos will significantly depreciate. Barbara Roche, 7247 Delaney Drive, does not wish to speak, but would like her comments to be made part of the record. I do not want my property to depreciate. If you install the storage units with lighting, I feel the value of my condo will. Mike Pergone, 7316 South Delaney Drive. I am opposed. He would like that made part of the record. And the last one I have here is David and Diane Evans, 7325 Delaney Drive. They do not wish to speak, but would like it read publicly. I'm concerned with what this project will do to property values. In parentheses, decrease values. That lights will be on 24 hours a day. That the atmosphere of the grass that surrounds our grounds will be destroyed. I have one more who does not wish to speak. Mr. Frank East, 7327 South Delaney Drive. He would like it read publicly, I believe, or into the record. They're both kind of accent circled. I do not want the property changed. Sir John Shiften, 7317 South Delaney Drive. He would like it read publicly. I'm interested in seeing zoning next to Camelot Trails reflect residential values as good neighbors. Lastly, Judy Seifert, Shiften, sorry. Does not wish to speak, but would like it made part of the record. Against the zoning. With that, if there's anybody that would like to approach the podium, I have the list as we received them. First, we have Joan Limpek. Is Joan here?
I didn't check the box. I just wanted to...
Oh, you just would like it read, ma'am? Okay, she would like it read into the record. It says, "I am against the rezoning." She is at 2205 East Excalibur Court. Thank you. One more that would like to be read as part of the record. Thaddeus Lampsy, 2202 East Excalibur. I do not want the property changed. I believe the rest are speaking. So, you going first, Lonnie?
Yes.
Okay. Let me find your slip. You can start, Lonnie.
Okay. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, my name is Lonnie Benning, 7254 South Delaney Drive. I'm president of the Camelot Trails Condominium Association at this time, representing 90 sets of homeowners and over 300 residents that live in our development. We do have quite a few that are here that didn't get forms. The forms ran out back there, so there is even more that would have done that. My first comment is to ask a question about following the procedure, and I'm wondering if Doug or someone is here to answer that. This procedure is not followed, the proper procedure, in my opinion, and our opinion. We were, when we were at the first planning meeting, we were given erroneous information, and I think you all acknowledge that, or at least I know Mr. Mayor did, and Steve did, our alderman, acknowledged that we were given wrong information. And it came back to the council meeting, and it was returned to planning. When we left here at the last council meeting, we were told this was going to go to planning. Steve encouraged and asked the prospective buyer to meet with us. We were notified of no planning meeting. So, we're wondering, first off, on procedure, how did this get back to council without going first to planning, like we were told when we left here?
Okay. I am going to turn that over to Doug Seymour, our Director of Planning, because the confusion actually came on the map that you presented.
It was, the map was erroneous, yes.
No, if I may.
Go ahead, Doug.
The map was not erroneous. The map was correct. There was may have some misinterpretation on behalf of those who may have read it, the map, the legal description, the notice, the report. Those were all correct. I sent a, the next morning, I sent a detailed email to the common council members explaining that information, and that's why it was not brought back before the plan.
Could we have not been advised of that? We were waiting for the next planning meeting notice.
It did not have to go back to planning because it was...
But when we left here, we were told it did.
But after it was clarified by staff, it did not have to legally go back to planning because it was correct.
And no one notified us of that. No one notified us of that. The question is, is that we have along our entire border of our condominiums, it is A1. To go from A1 to light manufacturing is not retaining property values. This was A1. If a front portion needed to be zoned, changed, or whatever, I am sure that that map, if you look at the green, that all of that area along our homes was zoned A1 for a purpose back when it was first zoned B4 in the front of that area. Why is this also not being treated typically? You know, he just, Doug just explained how this is not typical. Why is it not typical to have 100 owners, possibly more, that are going to have access to that property 24 hours a day? You know they have to have lights on 24 hours a day. There's going to be 100 owners. The person buying it is not going to be an owner. He steps aside. And all of these little garages, basically, that are going to be some type of business are owned by someone else. And that is, that's worse than going to manufacturing in many ways. And then we have, we have this other lot that he's then going to sell, that we've never even seen any plans on or known about, because we don't even know who the buyer of the lot is that's going to be along our borders.
One minute, Lonnie.
Okay. I'm just asking that this procedure be thought about in terms of the well-being and the property values of our owners. We have, we've contacted the DNR. The DNR said nothing can be stopped there. If you looked at that buyer's map, he has, he's proposed to fill in all the ponds. He can't just do that. The DNR has to. Did you, have you gotten anything from the DNR yet? Is the question I have.
Ma'am, we're in a rezon. That's not the question. The question is the rezon, regardless of if the ponds are there or not.
We have, we have abundant of tree frog, those cricket frogs that are on the endangered list, and believe me, we're going to be following up on that with the DNR. We've talked to them now twice. And they will be coming as soon as they get notification. And so, this whole area is a green space that we have all appreciated, and I understand that there's rezoning. But to go to light manufacturing is just out of the norm. And this whole process has been totally out of the norm.
Doug, would you like...
And irregardless of what it should be, which is to preserve our property values also.
Doug, would you please comment on the process?
Well, the process for a rezoning is, or let's just play this out, as the person who's got the land in a contract wishes to ultimately have approval for a self-storage and for commercial condominiums. They always require a conditional use permit in LM1 Light Manufacturing zoning district. The proposal before the council this evening, before the Plan Commission previously, is to rezone the property, and there's a split zoning of B4 in the front, you're correct, and A1 in the back, to this LM1 zoning district. And that's, for right now, that's where it stops. And if he is successful, then he or a future buyer of the property will have enough to come before this Plan Commission, this Common Council, for a conditional use permit for each of those. It is a process that begins with the Plan Commission. They make a recommendation to the Common Council. The Common Council holds a public hearing. We notify typically 300 feet away per state statute. That has been increased by virtue of your alderman's request to 600 feet. We cross-checked that against the labels that you provided, so those condominium owners within 600 feet were notified, as well as everyone else, as indicated by the, kind of the hatch shading there. Comes with notice in the paper, 10 days prior, actually published twice in the local newspaper, comes before the Common Council. You have an opportunity to speak with respect to whether you're in favor or opposed to it. And ultimately, it's going to be the Common Council's decision as to whether they feel the zoning is appropriate.
Did we not have a right to be notified of all 90 homeowners since we are a condominium association?
No. You have the same rights as any other property owner, and that's within 300 feet.
What about economic interest? All of, all 90 owners have the same economic interest. Why were they not all notified?
Again, I answered your question. Statute requires 300 feet. We doubled that to 600 feet at the request of your alderman.
Stephen, we didn't, they didn't even get notifications of this meeting.
Next up, we have Russ Beaumont, 9718.
I don't want to take...
Name and address, please, Russ.
Okay, Russ Beaumont, 9718 West National Avenue in West Dallas, Wisconsin. I've been the owner of Bank of Discount, and there's some, close to 30 years there, which has been a very enjoyable time, the years we were there. But I'm getting quite a bit older. I'm in my 80s now, so it's time for me to leave. The problem, I'm thinking of so many people there, so anti-development. Development is important. It's important to the community, and it affects everybody in the community from the standpoint of revenue coming in. Because of cost, there's a lot of high costs in education. Many of the people that are living in the community have children, maybe two or three children, and if they were to have to send even just one child, they'd be paying at least $1,000 a month just to educate that child. The schools here are incredibly beautiful. They have all the most modern facilities that you can imagine, and those things have to be paid for. Now, if you want to stop any development going on, we're going to cut back on resources coming into the city, and we're going to end up like the things like the city of Franklin is. They don't want no business there, but people there can't hardly afford their taxes. And I've had people come to me, you know, behind the counter where I'm working, and they're telling me, you know, their taxes are going to, as you know what, your taxes will go up a lot, lot further if we don't get more development going on in the city. You can't just close off developing. Developing is important. That's what builds a beautiful community, which Oak Creek is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dana Merkel. Is she here? Come on up. Come on down, you're the next contestant.
Hi, Counsel.
Hi, name and address, please.
My name is Dana Merkel. I'm a, I work, I live at 7238 Delaney Drive, and I bought my residence because of the green space. I, sorry, I'm sweaty, but I was working in my yard, and I appreciate my yard. I'm a northern girl, and I specifically bought it because it's nice and dark at night. There's nice green spaces, and I really appreciate that. If the floodlights are on, I'm not going to be a happy camper, and I'm not going to stay. You know, you choose your places based on where you feel comfortable, and that would not be comfortable. Secondly, I'm a single mom. I have children, and I do not feel comfortable with multiple people walking in and out through those storage units as a safety issue. I picked my place also because it's at the end of a cul-de-sac where there isn't a lot of traffic. There's not a lot of foot, foot people going in and out, and I don't feel comfortable doing it. Thank you. Please consider.
Thank you very much. Next, Brandon. Brandon Van Vars. I get you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandon. Oh, yeah. My name is Brandon Van Vars. I live at 7263 South Delaney Drive. And according to our Wisconsin State zoning laws, Chapter 17, 170103, it is the city's responsibility to protect the existing potential values and to preserve the beauty of our community. We feel that this really does devalue our properties, and my main question here is, we were not notified of what's going in here besides that it's just storage units. The person that's buying the property and the mystery partner, we haven't heard anything on what they plan on doing, so we have to assume the worst. So, we, you guys advised them to contact us. We have not been contacted by Venture or the mystery partner.
Doug, any comment on that?
I can't comment on what the developer has or hasn't had in terms of contact with the neighborhood.
Okay.
Then I'd just add, we are strongly against this manufacturing in our backyard. It's right next to a park. It should be in a business park, not a recreational park. It's adjacent to what you guys purchased, a half a million dollar park, right adjacent to that. And that's a big issue for us.
Great, thank you. Last, oh, one housekeeping. There are more forms in the back. Apologize for running out, but I've been informed they've been put back there. So, if you feel the need, you still want to speak, please fill one out, feel free to bring it up, or have it read into record. Last, we have Jim Cruck, 7254. Is Jim here?
Good evening. My name is Jim Cruck. I live at 7254 South Delaney. I'm opposed to any building on that western border with Camelot Trails for a number of reasons. One of these, one of these properties, the property's going to be split up. One of them is going to be a storage facility. The second one, we don't really know what is going to be. And I question, how can we, how can we rezon something to contain something that we don't get, that's an unknown quantity? We don't even know what's going there.
Again, the question is, if they can rezon it, and if the property owner requests the rezon, it's up to planning and council to see if it's appropriate. For all we know, it may sit vacant for, in perpetuity, as an LM1.
Then why, why are we, why are we rezoning it from agricultural to LM1?
Why? Because the property owner has a chance to probably, in my view, sell the property if it is rezoned. So, whoever currently owns the property would like it rezoned so he can sell his property.
Is that a valid...
They're within their rights to do that.
To rezon for no specific purpose, but just for, in general, to, in other words, this person could go from, from light manufacturing to heavy manufacturing, for instance.
If it fits in a comprehensive plan. Now, M1 would not, would not work there. Am I correct in that, Doug?
Right. I mean, that's, wouldn't stop anyone from, if they wanted to submit an application to do that, but it's, again, ultimately going to be the discretion of the Common Council, whether they feel that the proposed rezoning fits in with the city's vision for, for the community, and whether it's through the strategic plan, comprehensive plan, I mean, those are all factors that the council needs to consider when they deliberate the rezoning.
I guess, in summary, I'm opposed, I'm opposed because it borders on Camelot Trails, which has been there since 1976. It has been A1 agricultural, which provides a green space. We have no information of what's, what's going to happen to this, to this green space's buffer, if you will, that we have with the, with the rest of the, of the development. The, I believe there's an open question as to what's going to go into these, where, I think we're blindly rezoning this property for an unknown purpose. Thank you.
Brandon, 7263 South Delaney Drive. I just want to make note in case of a future lawsuit that we consider this spot zoning. And so, I just want to put that on the record.
Any comment to spot zoning, Doug?
I think that's a legal concept that there's significant case law regarding that I don't believe at this point is supported by any of the facts of this case.
I've been handed a few more to read into the record. Wendy Ballistrieri, 7271 South Delaney Drive. Does not wish to speak, but would like her comments made part of the record. I do not want the rezon. Diane Polkowski, 7304 South Delaney. She does not wish to speak, but would like the comment read publicly. We lived in the condos before and return now for retirement due to the quiet park-like setting. Do not want business added. Do not want business added. People will move. Uh, Rene Steinbeck, 7286 South Delaney. I do not agree with the rezoning, and she would like that comment made part of the public record. Mr. Paul Ballistreri, 7271 South Delaney. He did not check a box, so I'm just a, okay, I will read it publicly. I'm opposed to the rezoning. It's quiet and peaceful back there. There are many forms of wildlife too, including frogs, deer, coyote, squirrel, and over two dozen species of bird, including a hawk's nest. That was the first call. I will now make a second call on the public hearing. Please approach. Uh, did you fill out a form? If not, give us your name and for the record.
Thanks. Uh, Mike Orfriati with Venture Space. Uh, I live at 4191 Lakeland Drive in Neshawta, Wisconsin. I have a land use plan from 2002 that identifies the entire property as planned business. And I had asked Doug if, you know, if this plan was accurate. Actually, I received it from Doug. And so I think my question is, does the LM1 fit within the land use plan that the city passed back in 2002?
I will take that to our expert planner.
The LM1 light manufacturing zoning district was adopted by the common council either earlier this year or later, late, late last year. So, at the point in time when the comprehensive plan was developed in 2002, the LM1 did not exist. Now, given the fact that it is a hybrid zoning category between a, uh, some of the more retail and commercial zoning, such as the B4, which the property is owned right now, or a portion of property is owned right now, and a limited or light manufacturing, which is mostly research development, no actual, um, I mean, there are a number of things which are prohibited in the LM1 district. I believe that a strong case can be made that it is appropriate within the context of a planned business land use designation.
Thank you, Doug.
And again, just to explain, the concept at this point is to get, as you said, get everything set up, get the property teed up, get the zoning correct, and get the property boundaries set correctly so that the properties could be used. Um, the reason why development plans haven't come forward yet is because that's a very expensive process. We just wanted to get this one step. You know, we're very deliberate people. We just want to make sure everything is being done properly. And it gives people plenty of time to voice their opinions regarding the development plans when those plans are put together. At this point, no plans have been developed for either of the lots. We, we literally have no plans. And, and, you know, whenever those plans are put together by whoever wants to develop the properties, obviously they'll have to go through the entire planning process and approval process. So we just felt that this was fair to just take one step at a time, but get the property set up and prepared so that, you know, developers could move forward.
Great. Thank you. On the second call, we have, uh, one more person wishing not to speak, would like it read publicly. Anwar Salami, Lonnie, I am against the rezoning. Um, one more person would like it read publicly into the record. Nagar Kai, I am against the rezoning. Uh, I will now make a third and final call. Uh, name and address for the record, miss?
Kimberly Van Vors. Um, for the record, I'm going to spell my last name because it was spelled incorrectly in the last minute, so. V A N V O R S as in Sam.
Yeah, thank you.
7263 South Delane Drive. Um, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Um, so the, the issues I have have clearly been stated. I'm, you remember them. I don't need to repeat them. But, um, we've seen the mapping that has started to happen and actually go up and the flags go up to where the land is and, and where it is. So we're called Camelot Trails because we have trails that actually go around all of our property. So these are walkable trails for your kids, for your dogs, for your family members, for whoever, um, that lives within our property. And so they're beautiful trails. Um, and these trails, uh, would actually be taken out by the mapping. They're currently on the property. And they were put on that property, I don't know, Lonnie.
1960.
1962. I, I don't know, whenever the.
Trails, trails were put on the property that the association doesn't own?
Yeah, it's, it's on there. It's been on there for years when it was built.
That's illegal.
Well, it's there. And so obviously, we're going to have to move those. It's probably going to end up having to happen because it's not our property to have those trails on. I don't know who approved that. Just like, I don't know who did the zoning in the first place for the A1 and the B4, um, who, whose job that was, who the crack job. I don't exactly agree with your planning guy. I don't think he's a, a expert. Um, he, he doesn't even know when the April law of LM1 went in. I mean, he should be educated on that. That's not something that I should have to yell out in a crowd full of people that should know that information.
He, he's fine, miss. I'll, I'll vouch for him. He's okay.
Okay. But in, in the purpose of, of things too, I, I mean, you can vouch for him, that's fine, but come election time, I have to vouch for you and I have to vote for you.
I, I understand.
And you've got a room full of voters, so.
I understand that, and I have a city full of people too, not just, not just 300 Camelot Trails.
So, and I don't like that the gentleman came up here and stated and put words in my mouth that were against development. We are not against development. In fact, I applaud the Drexler Town Square. I applaud taking down the porn shop that I've been praying over for seven years, that that thing be torn down because it's, it's an ugly eyesore in Oak Creek. I am not against development, but I am against the natural buffer that is already there that this property wants to butt up right to my backyard. When I walk out onto my patio, there it will be forever. And that's, I purchased my property in September. That's the whole reason I bought it. I went and looked at houses in Muskego. My mom lives in Jackson. I went all over the state and I said, nothing looks like this. Nothing looks like this. And so it hurts me to know that that's going to be ripped away. And then we talk about zoning laws and zoning regulations and, and the zoning things that are all the legalistic terms. But the bottom line is that you have the right, as the people appointed on the council, to make the decision regardless of that. You have the right to say no.
We have established that. We know that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That being the third and last call, we will close the public hearing and we'll move on to item number six.
Mayor.
Mayor. Name and address for the record, ma'am.
Thank you. Mary Zelenko, 2200 East Excalibur Court. I just wanted to say that all of you are elected officials and are expected to represent the interest and protection of the people that elected you, not the interest of developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Any other hands going up there? Okay. Uh, we will move on to item six. It's a consideration of ordinance 2860, rezoning the properties in 1901 and 1941 East Rossin Avenue from B4 Highway Business to A1 Limited Agricultural to Light Manufacturing in the first district. So before we go, I'm just going to make a couple of general comments because I know this has been contentious. I know you people are upset because the property owners have a right to rezone their property, just like you have the right to sell your property. They have a right to prepare their property for sale. Okay? That field, again, it has been A1. It's been wide open forever and you have enjoyed it. You've been very fortunate because whoever owned it could have done other things with it. They could have stored, if it is A1, they could have had manure piles back there. They could have had tractors going. It could have been farmed. Okay? So it, it, whatever. That's what it is. Okay? But bottom line is, it is their property. Now, to control that property and make full decisions on what goes on in that property, you can buy the property and then you have total say as to what to do as an association. Now, that, we know that you're probably not interested in doing that. Okay? So we go down this path. If we rezone, as Doug stated, they come back through planning with whatever plans they have. And the developer from Venture said they currently have no plans for that. The first step in selling that property is to get it rezoned. And that's what we're really talking about, not the potential of what could or couldn't be. Because quite frankly, whoever buys it may have something in mind and something better may come along or the financing could, a lot of things can happen. There's many things proposed in a city that never come full term here. So just want to keep that in mind as we move forward because we realize it can be impactful. But again, our plan goes back, I think Doug said, to 2002. This actually does fit. Part of the reason for the hybrid zoning is some of the situations we face as a city. Our revenue's being cut, we're being capped on levy. We have some real financial issues going on and this isn't all about money, but it helps us to develop the city by having niches where we can put in businesses because the business climate's changing. It's going to more computerized stuff. Now, again, you won't have heavy manufacturing or anything like that, but some of the things going on are light assembly or, or these, these, um, storage or condo places that we've seen arrive in our city. And, and part of that is a changing economy and a need for us to do that, or we'd have vacant land all over. We, as the one gentleman said, our, our development would almost stagnate and our taxes would start to swell based on the needs just to keep services. So part of it is, is to be a diverse community that welcomes different businesses and have different options. That's really part of the reason that LM came about. Um, we're not the only community to do it. Uh, there's many others out there that, that we modeled it off of. But again, your real leverage comes in the conditions and restrictions that it brings. And that's been demonstrated with a few projects that have come through here in just the last few months with the conditions and restrictions that they put down on the businesses to affect them. And I can talk directly to a storage unit that went between commercial business and a subdivision. And they came in and they did have to work very diligently with the neighborhood that came in to represent that subdivision as to, you know, straying lights and things of that nature. And keep in mind, I've gotten a lot of phone calls about 24/7. We do not allow 24/7 on those premises. So just keep that in mind. But with that, I'm going to open it up to the council. Talked long enough. Steve, you want to start it?
I'm sure you expected me to be the, the, the one that started off here tonight. I will say that I agree with the mayor, Doug's, the residents' comments, everything that was said because it's nice to see an issue where the community comes to the meetings and voices their opinions. And I met with some of the residents beforehand, mayor, and said some of the things that you said, you know, they don't own the property. The owners, people who do can, you know, basically do what they want within, within the law, stuff like that. But I've got a number of comments and they're not in any particular order because I'm still slowing down from my drive from Michigan today. Um, Lonnie, I just want to let you, first off, this is not going to change any of my, any of my comments, but just by show of hands, is there anybody in the audience that is a resident north of Rossin Avenue? Okay, none. Thank you. Just want to, Lonnie, I, I will tell you that when Doug says, and when, um, Carrie sends out the notices for the meetings, when they say they do, they do. However, I was looking at the map that we had up here and understanding that there's 90, 90 some residents in your condominium association, just by looking at that map, within the 300-foot radius, I only counted 12. So adding 600 feet only added nine more. So, uh, that, that only was 20, roughly, if my math is right, 21 out of 90. So to say that not everybody got it, that, that's why. And that's why it was important for you to share the information amongst the association to make sure that those that didn't get the notices knew about the meeting. Sometimes a development comes into the city that, in the, in the words of, uh, previous mayor, Scafitti, those of us who are elected, we get paid to make the tough choices. And everybody up here has made it, made a decision on some topic, maybe you new guys haven't yet, but, um, that is either the, their constituents like or don't like. But when we have to look out for the well-being of our district, we're also responsible for looking out for the well-being of the city in total. Having said that, sometimes when you get a development, you try and look at everything that's been presented to me and you just, you just get a bad feeling about something. And that's what I have about this, and I'll tell you why. When that property first, let's say, became active, whether it was over a year or so ago, I started getting complaints about activity on the property. And, um, I think I went to, uh, the Mike Simmons with that. Uh, they went out there and, and I believe you had to issue a stop work order on that property because the owner had called the county and said, hey, I want to do this on this property. I want to do these approaches. I want to do this and do that. Well, the county said, yeah, that's okay. I mean, it's a county highway. Go ahead and do what you want. At least that was the impression I got. So the first impression I got from the property owner who tried to say, well, we did this and we did that, and the county said it was okay. Well, it's, it's a piece of land within the city. Should you not have called the city to talk about what you wanted to do versus we had to go to the county, issue a stop work order, kind of figure out what's going on? Well, then, we fast forward to the last meeting where we had the, the issue with the, with the, with the maps and, um, thought they were incorrect. Turned out they were correct. But I noticed that the developer, if it was Mr. Friedy, if you were there at the last meeting, were you at the last meeting? You, you still wanted to push, even with the issues we were having with the questions for what was zoned this, what was zoned that, you still wanted to make us push forward with our decision that night. So you weren't taking into account the concerns that the residents had. Turned out to be, we had it right, but that was the, that was the, that was the way you conducted yourself. And then I strongly suggested that you get in contact with the folks who are going to be most affected by this and try and have a meeting and try and work out the concerns because we've had other developments in the city with similar concerns by residents that bordered a development. And the developer sat down and literally came to an agreement with the neighbors that every concern that they had, they worked it out. You know, minimum setback 30, no, okay, we'll do 70, maybe 150. I mean, they just worked it all out. And I understand you've reached out to nobody to try and present your plans, as mysterious as they are, to try and help with, help the neighbors calm their fears. Now, you're proposing a 24-hour, seven self-storage facility. Mayor, thank you very much for pointing out that those are not allowed. Thank you. Because that was a concern I was going to have. And that was a concern the residents had too. But we've had other self-storage facilities come in. They worked with the neighbors. They try and worked out things. Everything seems to be going fine. We have another similar facility with this condominium-style manufacturing facility. Doug, I believe we have one that's being built or proposed to be built.
That's correct. It's proposed.
And it's something totally new to the city, correct?
That's correct.
So we're, we're basically speculating that this facility is going to move forward and do well. Now we want to come forward with something that, a second facility. And I'm not sold on a second facility until I, I'm assured that the first one that's being built, also in my district, is going to be successful. Because I don't want something built that's going to be vacant and just sit there and then we have to figure out what to do with it after it's been built. Well, and going back to last meeting, after we had that Well, and going back to last meeting, after we had that little problem with the, uh, with the, with the maps, um, we get an email from Mr. Friedy going, "When can we get this done? When can we get this done?" Well, you know, whether it's Mr. Friedy, or any other developer who might be present, or anybody who hears me say this, you just don't walk in the city hall and say, "I want to get this done, when are we going to get this done? Let's forget about what the residents have to say, blah, 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 let's move forward." And I felt, felt that Mr. Friedy was being a little pushy. So, I'm not happy with speculative buildings of this sort. We've already got two other self-storage facilities that are yet to be built, that are approved to be built, and from talking with one of those developers, we're just, in his opinion, his opinion, mind you, okay, please, his opinion is, we, Oak Creek might be maxed out at that type of business. So if we're going to add yet another one, again, we're going to build something, is it going to sit empty? And the final thing is, well, it may not be the final thing, I have to find my notes Uh, it does state here in the, in the notes from the May 23 Plan Commission meeting, there's, Mrs. Benning had made some comments, there's no proposal right now that shows any, any site layouts for these two. When the other self-storage facilities came to us, it was my opinion that, or my belief, my recollection, was that, here's, here's the piece of property, we may want to have it rezoned, and we want it rezoned because this is what we want to build, and see exactly what we want to build, right there on a black and white. And I was able to look at that. And I haven't seen squat from Mr. Friedy. So, please, I'm... I've had other developers, we have all had other developers, including the apartment complex at, at Pennsylvania and Drexel, sit down with the elected officials and say, "This is what we want to do." And I can tell you that the, the self, the builder of the self-storage facility behind Wendy's, when he wanted to do that, and I says, "You know, the first thing you're going to have to do is convince the people that live in that subdivision that you want to build a self-storage facility, and you're going to have to make those people happy, because it's going to border on their property." And he had meetings with the residents, he reached out to them. We don't have that here. So, going back to what I said, sometimes you have things come before you, and you just have a bad feeling about something, and if all you've got is your gut feeling that says, "This ain't right," well, then that's what I have, that this ain't right. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Right? Rich?
I don't want to repeat myself.
Being relatively new to this process, just a couple of questions. So if we were to approve the, the zoning change, it would still be the responsibility of the Planning Commission to set terms and conditions that would address a majority of the neighbors' concerns?
Whatever goes in, allowed in the M1 zoning district, has to come through planning, whether it is a light assembly, whether it's storage, whatever allowed there will come before planning. LM1, I'm sorry, what did I say? Oh, okay. Either way, it has to come back. The only thing we're talking about tonight is the zoning. I know we're, we're getting the, everybody knows he wants to put storage in there, but that's really not the question right now. The question is, is it appropriate to rezone from B4 to LM1? That is the question. Sir, you have to be on the microphone.
Public, public hearing has been closed.
And it is closed. So, a-again, it's a rezone, okay? Irrelevant as to whatever's going in there, it's, it's what the zoning is. It will come back, the planning, whatever type of building goes on there, comes back, the planning for conditions and restrictions.
So that I'm clear, and I'm sure a number of the, the residents are clear as well, the, if we approve, um, the rezone to LM1, that is not the, the death, the death blow to the, the association and to the surrounding community, because restrictions can still be put in place by planning that would address a majority of the, the residents' concerns. Is that correct?
Correct.
Doug?
Maybe I can just clarify that.
Okay.
Your short answer is yes.
Okay.
But I just want to maybe just provide a little bit more color to that. Uh, the base zoning would be LM1 Light Manufacturing. So any one of those, provided that the council would vote to rezon that this evening, or, uh, so any one of those permitted uses in LM1, which, you're right, are kind of research, development, light assembly, that kind of thing, those could be going as a right. So, and, so in that case, if someone wanted to build a building, build a parking lot, build anything on that property, yes, it would come back to the Planning Commission, yes, it would need, they would need approval of site and building plans, but no, that would not be a public hearing, that would not come in a common council. Now, in this instance, based on what we know from the applicant's narrative, the intention here is to develop two different facilities on, on those properties. Uh, the first being a self-storage facility, which would require a conditional use permit in the LM1 manufact, Light Manufacturing Zoning District, as well as commercial condominiums, which also would require a conditional use permit in an LM1 Light Manufacturing District. So, a couple of things could happen i- if it were rezoned. Again, that's your call, uh, you're certainly within your, your rights as a council to make that decision. But if it were rezoned LM1, there's nothing that compels him to come back for those conditional use permit requests. He could utilize the property in accordance with the zoning, again, just getting your site building, uh, landscaping plans approved. But if, as was the intent specified, uh, one wanted to develop that self-storage, those commercial condos, has to come back through the exact, actually, the exact same process, uh, and then some, as the rezoning, requiring the Planning Commission, public notification, public hearing, conditions and restrictions, and then following that, according to those conditions and restrictions, would come back to the Planning Commission for review of those detailed site, building, landscaping, and lighting plans.
Thank you, Doug.
I need, Doug, I need a clarification on this map here, on the colored, colored map. Exactly, okay, I see the B4 in the purple, okay? Is all of that purple, would, would that all go to B4? Or is it just where the red outline is? On the colored?
So, and I'm going to try and stay on the mic here, and I understand you won't be able to see it on both screens, but, uh, the area which is outlined in the red.
Okay.
Those are the properties, there's actually two properties here, those are the subject of the rezoning. The, actually, red is kind of showing me, it was pinkish or purple on the screen here. That is the area that is zoned B4 Highway Business. The light green is the area zoned A1 Agricultural. The proposal th- this evening is to take those, the B4 area and the A1 area within this property and to rezon it to LM1. That would not change the B4 area east of that on Rossin, would not change the A1 area east of that, uh, adjacent to Camelot Trails, or west of that. It would only be within the boundaries of this property.
Okay, so that green area that would be east of the purple, that's, that wouldn't be rezoned?
That's not, that's not part of the...
That's not part of it?
No. It's not under their ownership.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got, thanks.
Dan?
Oh, Dan, I did have one question for Doug, just to clarify. I think you said it before, Doug, to remind me, the comprehensive plan we've adopted, it's currently adopted, has this...
Plan business.
Plan business? The property that is currently zoned B4 and A1, right?
That's correct.
And the RS4 and the RD1 are, or, under the Comp Plan residential designation?
It's mixed residential, and, and the, kind of the vacant areas surrounding that into the south are shown as planned office, and just, just very briefly, that was done in response to concerns by the airport who did not want to see additional residential developed along the flight paths.
The RS4 and the RD1 are consistent with the Comp Plan, and the A1 is consistent, but, I mean, it's part of the...
Well, the, the A1 isn't necessarily consistent, but it's, it's how the property's zoned.
Okay, Ken?
Yeah.
Chris, anything?
Um, I pretty much stated everything at, at Plan Commission when we met. Um, I just have to say that, you know, um, when properties go up for sale, whether it's this property here, or it's a condo next door to you, we don't always have a chance or a choice of, of knowing who's going to be our neighbor at the time. You have to always kind of go a little bit of faith and, and hope that, um, that you end up with a good neighbor. Is it going to be a good choice or a bad choice? You know, I don't know, but when you sell a condo, do you ever have a chance to know who's going to buy it next door to you?
Please, you can't speak from the audience, man. Doug, just to clarify on that map that, that Mike brought up, the area in pink, there's three properties there. Well, they're not in pink.
There's two properties.
They're in the, they're in the red square, the red squares. Right? Because you're going to do a CSM that combined them two and seven, and there's an A1 property.
Uh, there are two properties there right now, and, and they're both outlined in the dark, the dark red. So there's kind of an L-shaped property.
Right.
And then the one that, that's the easternmost border.
Okay. That's going to be your L1, LM1 Manufacturing. That property that, that Mike pointed out, to the east and north Camelot Trails with the, the point, it kind of runs right along the backside of them homes, that's to remain A1, correct?
The zoning is not changing on those properties. We have not proposed to change them.
So that buffer's going to be there between them and whatever goes in there, if anything ever goes in there, correct?
Is that privately held, Doug?
Sorry?
Is that agricultural, that A1 piece privately held?
Uh, I can tell you in a second, actually.
That, that would matter, Dan.
Yeah. You're right. Because the buffer is kind of there.
Yep.
Somewhat. I mean, eventually, that person could come in and request what they want too, but...
It's owned by Waterstone Bank.
That is owned by...
CG Properties Development LLC.
That green portion?
Yes.
Hmm. Okay. So that, wouldn't that be considered an outline?
In the right spot here.
It, it looks like a big one, but not all.
Wouldn't that be an outline, Doug?
Here?
Triangular piece.
Hey, Lawrence, and, so there's a, you can see here, here's Delane Drive. There, there's a smaller piece here that is owned by, uh, Lawrence Bregman, which, who was the original landowner, and I think, still believes, still owns this property here, so this small triangle here, that is under separate ownership.
Is that number 7,300, Doug?
Yes.
Yeah.
And any idea how wide that parcel of property is?
The triangle?
Correct. Well, at its, at its widest point, let's say at the, at the northern end, obviously it, yeah, that area diminishes as you, you go further south, but how much of a buffer does that little area provide to the residents?
120 feet.
At its, at its largest, and at its smallest, at, at the, the south end?
Well, it goes down to zero.
Okay.
Would that be an outline, Doug? For access to Ross?
It's, it's a parcel, I mean, I...
So that's, the trails actually sit on that land.
That's what it looks like from this map, yeah, from this aerial.
Okay. So the trails could technically be there, or stay there, as long as the property owner doesn't want them removed.
Doug, are your red lines on that map property owners, or just parcel?
Which, which one are you looking at now, Ken?
Uh, I'm looking at the aerial photo there.
These are zoning lines.
Okay, all right.
I can turn out those zoning lines if you'd like. Well, one thing, if, if I may, maybe kind of in conclusion, I mean, a lot of, of what we do, and we do things according to the law, and according to our ordinances, and according to our statutes, and that is designed not only to protect your rights, but to protect the rights of all property owners. And that establishes a process. And to the extent that anyone, whether it's you, your neighbor, or anyone who owns property, has the ability to avail themselves of that pro- process to request changes to zoning, and that's what's happening here. And I think one of the, of the things, one of the questions we asked ourselves, and I put it in the staff report, uh, would we have preferred to see a development concept for this property? Yes, of course we would have. Uh, is it required? No. Uh, and in the absence of that, it's only natural to wonder, well, what's going to be there? There's going to be a, a building right next to my house, there's going to be a parking lot. Uh, so, those types of things, and those types of investments, when one is looking to develop property, and it's, it's, again, I, I said it before, I'll say it again, it's, it's typical when you're making the investment as a developer to invest in those types of support materials. Again, not required, and I'm not going to say, uh, you know, it's not going to diminish this request because these aren't there, it just creates a bit of a challenge in kind of conveying the concept to staff, the neighborhood, and to the council. So what you're left with ultimately is taking a look at this property, and kind of throwing out the whole idea of, well, there might be self-storage here, there might be commercial condos here, and asking yourself, is this property suitable for the LM1 Light Manufacturing District? Because ultimately, that's the only thing you control tonight. And at, at that point in time, you can't compel someone to come back with a conditional use permit application, you can't for self-storage or for commercial condos. If the zoning is LM1, they can develop according to LM1. If the zoning is B4, which it is right now, for a great portion of that, the northern portion of that, they can come back and develop according to B4, which is a, just as far as our commercial zoning districts go, it is probably one of the more permissive zoning districts. If the remainder of the property is A1, that person can avail themselves of any of the permitted uses in A1. So, again, in the absence of information, it's only natural to, uh, to think the worst. I will say, and I think both Steve and, and Dan and, uh, others mentioned it, that the process moving forward is such that we have more ability to regulate, uh, the actual physical development of that site. And at that point, there is no option. At that point, you show us exactly what you want to do, and based on that, we will give it a scrutiny at the Planning Commission, at staff, uh, so that it does meet our ordinances, so it does give the neighborhood the opportunity to weigh in and shape, hopefully, that development so that it is part of our neighborhood, and we're not, you know, creating walls between neighbors. So, from that standpoint, um, those all, things will all happen, but right now, as a council, uh, I think you're only left with taking a look at what the base zoning is, and that is, the question would be, is LM1 appropriate for that property?
Okay. With that, seeing no further comment, questions? Um, is there a motion?
Gail, move to approve the ordinance, 2860, rezoning the properties at 1901 and 1941 East Rossin Avenue from B4 Highway Business and A1 Limited Agriculture to LM1 Light Manufacturing District.
One moment, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dugniak?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Um, old business, number seven, resolution, consider a resolution, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 1901, 1941 East Rossin. Who's taking that one, Doug?
Sure. Uh, this is the resolution, approving the certified survey map that was held from the meeting in June, uh, June 6th, to be precise. The CSM, which we configured two of the existing commercial lots, which the council just rezoned to LM1 Light Manufacturing, both of which, both of the new lots would conform to the zoning district.
Just to note that access is controlled by Milwaukee County, being Rossin Avenue being a counter facility. And they would need to have approval for any driveway modifications onto Rossin Avenue. Also, as part of that, we heard mention of wetlands this evening. Those would have to be delineated and indicated as part of the certified survey map prior to recording. With that in mind, the Plan Commission has reviewed this request, and they have recommended approval of the certified survey map subject to, there are four conditions, one of which was the rezoning of the property, second of which was to incorporate the LM1 Light Manufacturing zoning requirements, third was showing all of the easements and wetlands, and fourth, both technical corrections all being made prior to recording of the map.
Thank you, Doug. Questions, comments from council? Nothing? Nothing to the right? Left? Motion.
Gail, move to approve Resolution 11824-060617, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 1901 and 1941 East Rossin Avenue, Michael Friedy Venture Space LLC.
One moment, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Oh.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
New Business, item eight, consideration of a resolution number 11835071817, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2.9 million in taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2017B. Bridgette?
Good evening. Tonight before you, we are moving our short-term, let me start over. For Emerald Row Phase Two, we had the 2.75 loan that we went into short-term financing on June 20th with the privately-held note for First Business Bank. So this is refunding that short-term, going into long-term financing in order to have the flexibility in how the debt was structured long-term. We had to go through this refunding process. So it was a quick turnaround from the short-term note into refunding. We went through the full Moody's rating process again with this debt issuance and received an AA2 rating and reaffirmed AA2 in the existing debt that the city has. So that continues to be good news and what we want to see. I have Paul Thompson here tonight with HSE to explain the consistent and good news on the interest rate as well.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. I'll be very, very quick. This whole process started back in March, beginning of March, when we realized that we had to make some amendments to the project plan. We've done all that. I don't know if we're lucky or good, but the interest rate that we had estimated back in March, the total interest cost, the difference today were $9,000 less than what we had estimated in March. I'll take the lucky part. It's at 3.75% for a taxable borrowing that goes out almost 20 years. Well, it does go out 20 years, because that's 2037. So that's a pretty good rate, taxable bonds in today's market. And Oak Creek continues to be held in high regard by investors. They love to buy Oak Creek paper. So that's good news for you. You have great market access.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul while he's up? No? Nothing? Okay. Questions of anybody? Not motion.
Gail, move to approve Resolution 11835-071817, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $2.9 million taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2017B.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item nine, consideration of a resolution approving the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Oak Creek, HSA Commercial Real Estate at 610 Rossin Avenue. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. I can take this one. I see, too, given the dates of when we started this discussion, we probably need to fill in our new Alderman with a little more background on this than what Attorney Carl has provided in the memo. So I'll start with that. The city was approached with, the city was approached with a potential partnership opportunity with HSA Commercial regarding a property, the former Bioversal property on the corner of Sixth and Rossin. And if you're familiar with the property, it's not the most sightly property we have in the community. And we have a hunch that the history of the use and the intensity of the use of the property would yield some sort of a cleanup effort for proceeding to redevelopment. In partnering with HSA, who is interested in ultimately purchasing the property, we determined that we could also partner with the state WEDC, the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, on what they call a site assessment grant program, a very popular program that they operate. And I would say, given that the initial MOU was, or grant was approved on February, that it is really inexplicable as to why we're here today without much more of an update. And I will say, it's not the responsibility, or it wasn't the cause of the city, and it wasn't the cause of the developer in this partnership. So I guess that leaves the other wheel, and we won't go there, on why we're here today without a site assessment going on, hopefully. But in regards to the site assessment grant itself, what that affords is for some investigation dollars to see what is actually on the site. It does not provide for the actual remediation. So with mutually interested parties in the city and the potential developer here wanting to understand what the facts of the property may be in order to redevelop that into a higher and better use into the future, we are going down this road of this site assessment grant application. Unfortunately, the way the timeline evolved or devolved, we found ourselves butting up against the new fiscal year and the site assessment grant dollars from the previous fiscal year. I guess we don't really have a new one yet because we don't have a state budget, but had frozen, had kind of dried up and been earmarked for other projects already. So we were forced to wait even further to get into the new fiscal year to actually apply for the site assessment grant in this partnership. We also learned that despite, as Attorney Carl has put in the memo, despite the statutory requirement match for the site assessment grant program, the, I guess, administrative rules or the preferences for competitiveness by the WEDC actually calls for a greater grant local match contribution. The city, as the municipality, must be the applicant. So we arrived with a memorandum of understanding, or which an amendment is before you tonight, to say that, sure, we will go down the path with the SAG application and be the applicant, but we are not coming out of pocket for any of those matching dollars. Given the resubmital and given the different dollars matching requirements of the SAG, we are here today to update that MOU to reflect those matching dollars. But nothing has changed in terms of, or the fact of the matter remains that the city is made fully whole by the developer, HSA, through this MOU for any grant dollars that it expends. A little long-winded answer, I wanted to give you a little background and maybe share a little frustration with you in this process, but certainly wasn't something HSA or the city could or could not have done differently. But we are here today, and really, we've just moved back this process, you know, six months. Same arrangement with the amendment to the MOU.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Motion.
Gail, make a motion to the council adopt Resolution number 11839-071817, a resolution approving an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Oak Creek and HSA Commercial Real Estate and/or assigns 610 West Rossin Avenue, 7001 South Sixth Street, and 7045 South Sixth Street.
Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Item 10 is our vendor summary report. Everybody take a look. Direct your questions to the lady in the red blazer. Thank you for that, Bridgette.
Oh, Bridgette, I did have a question, or maybe Andrew, you'd know, too. Just clarifying. Item number two, Bridgette, on the, on item number 11. Do you have a feel for what we got for our money there? Oh, that's true. We'll wait one.
I was very confused. I'm glad you said wait.
Got a question on 10, number two?
No. It's actually item number 11.
Oh, okay.
We'll wait.
All set? Motion?
Gail, move to approve the June 28, 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $344,571.14.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 11 is the vendor summary report for July 12th. Everybody, please take a look. And again, questions to Bridgette?
Item number two, Ken?
Yeah.
That is a Simmons question.
This is the Applied Ecological Services invoice. Is that what we're asking about? Okay. This is related to work that Applied Ecological Services did on the wetland park development and all the plantings.
This is past work, Mike? Or is this?
This is past work, and then we entered into, I believe, a three-year maintenance contract with them. So this is them performing the periodic maintenance and then billing for what they've done. And also, there's some goose fence repair. You know, we had to put up some goose fencing and also repair some of the fencing that was on the floating islands. So we got a proposal from them and did that.
The 13 grand is part of ongoing payments we make to them?
Yes, it is, correct.
And they're responsible for all of the wetland area?
Yes. The plantings, yes.
Plantings? That's their deal?
The plantings, yes.
The water plantings as well?
Yes.
Really?
Is, in item two, is that the end of our warranty on that stuff, so to speak? On the wetland stuff?
Yeah, right. We are beyond the original warranty, and we are into now just this service maintenance contract. So we have a, anytime you're dealing with these native plantings, they take quite a bit of TLC to get established, a couple of years before the native plantings really can take hold. And so there's a need for the weeding so that they can take hold. So it's fairly precise work. Unfortunately, I think that to the layman, a lot of times, there's not a true perception of how they are performing. But I just walked it last night, and I can see that there is progress.
Yeah. Okay. Motion on 11?
Kirkowski, make a motion to approve the July 12, 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $1,787,608.89.
Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you go on, I, we got to a point, sorry for bringing this up at this point of the meeting, but we got to a point in our meeting where we talk about finances. And has anybody not noticed that Mr. Degner is not here tonight? I mean, the stalwart of protecting the citizens here, and he's not here. So make sure he's okay.
We're all, we're entitled to vacation, too. Arden might be on a vacation.
I just, he's not here. He's always here.
But thanks for the concern.
Alright, I just...
And again, it is odd without Arden here. You're right.
I will call him.
Yeah.
Okay.
Although he's probably watching at home.
Good.
So...
Good DSL.
Yeah.
Disappointed, probably.
Item 12 is health. Consideration of a motion to concur with the recommendation of personnel for the mayor's appointment of Anna Barbera to interim community public health officer until an appointment of a community public health officer found.
Just real briefly, Mayor, I think, you know, everybody knows where we're at with this, and the Personnel Committee did, I guess, affirm the appointment of the mayor for the interim appointment as a health officer. We are required to do this even on an interim basis per the state statutes. I'd also add that this really came about in that when we've decided now to move on with not sharing a department with South Milwaukee. Our interim contractual relationship with Jackie Ovi and South Milwaukee had expired on, I believe, June 20th. So we've been in a little bit of holding pattern. We let the state know of our intentions to appoint Anne on the interim, in the interim, and that's satisfied until us taking this formal action this evening. I should note, the recruitment is ongoing for the public health officer position, and that closes, I believe, the 27th of this month. So be moving forward thereafter.
Questions, comments? Motion.
I'm going to make a motion to concur with the recommendation of the Personnel Committee to recommend Anna Barbera to continue as the interim community public health officer.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Community Development, item 13, consider a resolution for a certified survey map from Mike and Carrie Murphy for the properties at 10855 South 10th Street.
Thank you. Mike and Carrie Murphy requesting approval of the CSM. Proposals to divide the roughly 33-acre property into two lots of conforming size. First would be 1.29 acres. The residual of the lot would be 32.29 acres. There are wetlands and flood fringes and floodway and drainage easement really shown on the larger lot. For the lot, one is really unaffected by those. For the water and sewer utility, the public sanitary sewer in Elm Road will need to be extended from the west when the property develops, and the cost to do so will be borne by the developer. And that's noted in the condition of one of the approval. The Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed CSM, and they have recommended approval subject to the following conditions. First, that all required water and sewer extensions and connections are coordinated with the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility, and any associated development agreements are coordinated with the Engineering Department. All extension and connection costs shall be borne by the developer. Second is that all technical corrections be completed prior to recording of the map.
Thank you, Doug. Questions, comments? Planning did go over it. We did have some residents in attendance that were a little bit worried about how this was going to affect their property.
With flooding.
With flooding. They claim it's rather a wet property, but it is the owner's discretion to build. And Mike, you weren't here, but Brian was here, and he pretty much described the property as is, and everybody was satisfied with it. But the neighbors did express some concern.
Just for the record, I didn't get any calls.
There is sewer from the west? Or is that something planned for the future eventually?
Excuse me. I know that there is MIS sewer in the area, and in some of the other properties that developed, there was a need for a public sanitary sewer stub that would connect to that. And I believe that would be the same case here. Right. So as you look at the parcel in question, that north-south property line, the parcel one, I believe, is where there's going to be a home constructed. You can see there is a one-man hole just to the west of that property line. So they would need to extend to the east and then connect to a public sanitary manhole at that location. And then a short stub to the MIS manhole.
That's their sewage?
Yes.
I was under the impression houses on the south side of the road are all septic.
There may be some, I don't know, but I know some of the newer developed homes are... There may be some, I don't know, but I know some of the newer developed homes are, they had sanitary sewers extended. As far as the stormwater issues, that parcel one is up and out of floodplain, and there is no storm sewer in that area. It would be overland flow, and there is floodway that crosses parcel two of that CSM.
Any other questions? Motion.
Alderman will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11837, approving a certified survey map for Mike and Carrie Murphy for the property at 10855 South 10th Avenue. Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 14, consideration of a resolution approving an easement for pedestrian cross-access with Drexel Hotel Group, Inc. in the City of Oak Creek and the Waters of Oak Creek, LLC, for the property at 7980 South Market Street. Doug?
Thank you. You recall on June 20th, the council adopted a resolution approving a pedestrian access easement on the hotel property at 7980 South Market Street. This property, which is currently developed as, being developed as the Marriott Town Place Suites, contains that pedestrian pathway between the town square and Meyer. This pedestrian cross-access easement enables two pathway connections between the water senior living and this path. So it's essentially creating an easement between the easement that you approved last time and the water senior living.
Questions, comments? One question, Doug. Future maintenance responsibilities, is it the hotels or ours?
For the main pathway, it is ours.
Okay. Snore removal also. All right, motion.
Alderman moves that the council adopt resolution number 11840-071817, approving an easement for pedestrian cross-access with the Drexel Hotel Group, Inc., the City of Oak Creek and the Waters of Oak Creek, LLC, for the property at 7980 South Market Street.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 15, engineering, consider a resolution approving a stormwater management best-practice agreement with Wisconsin Electric Power Company for their administration building and warehouse development at 1077 South Chicago Road. Mike?
Thank you, this is for the development at the power plant property, the new administrative building and warehouse, and it is the standard agreement that assures that their stormwater management will be maintained.
Questions? Comments? Motion.
Alderman will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11838, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with the Wisconsin Electric Power Company for the administration building and warehouse development at 10770 South Chicago Road. Tax key number 966-999-002. Guzekowski, still second.
Roll call.
That would be a fourth.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
License Committee, I'm going to turn it over to Alderman Kirkowski for that, and I'll try and make this shorter than my earlier comments. License Committee met on June 11, 2017, minutes are attached, the following items were received after License Committee met. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 16, Kirkowski make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 17 individuals listed on the agenda favorable background reports received.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 18, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a change of agent to Aldi, Inc., Wisconsin, DBA Aldi number 01, 6810 South 27th Street, from Nancy L. Baker to James J. Bade, B-A-A-D-E, 3843 North 86th Street, Milwaukee favorable background report received.
Dukeniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 18, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a change of agent to Aldi, Inc., Wisconsin, DBA Aldi number 01, 6810 South 27th Street, from Nancy L. Baker to James J. Bade, B-A-A-D-E, 3843 North 86th Street, Milwaukee favorable background report received.
Dukeniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Item 19, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to Grumpy's, LLC, 1724 Spring Place Racine, selling prepackaged ice cream products and to the following salesperson, Michael Millard, on Monroe Avenue, South Milwaukee, favorable background report received.
Dukeniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And finally, item 20, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer/Class B wine license with a waiver of free fees to Bill Kurek, agent on behalf of the Oak Creek OJs, for the Oak Creek OJs 50th Annual Softball Tournament to be held at Shepherd Hills East and West Softball Fields on August 5th and 6th, 2017. Rain dates are August 12th and 13th, 2017.
Dukeniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Brings us to miscellaneous. Item 21 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, to discuss the terms of a proposed development agreement including a TIF incentive grant for the property owned by Woodman's Food Market, Inc., consisting of approximately four acres located at 8142 South Sixth Street. Alderman, Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail will move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to discuss the terms of a proposed development agreement including a TIF incentive grant for property owned by Woodman's Food Market, Inc., consisting of approximately four acres located at 8142 South Sixth Street.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.